I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, first of all, we want to thank you again for all of our veterans and for all of our first responders and for all of our military, wherever we're at in this world, and just be with them and keep, ask you to let us make the right decisions for our city and our citizens tonight at this meeting. Ask you to be with our, with our country and, and our truth. Son Jesus Christ, these things we pray in Jesus' precious holy name.
Amen. Thank you, Jim. All right, we do have large print agendas available over here. Bill is holding them up if, if that would be helpful to anyone. Before I call the meeting to order, I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney Ernest Kate, and we're going to, we're going to have a public hearing before, before the meeting. Ernest?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council by resolution set tonight for a public hearing on the issue of annexing five tracts of land that are shown up on the, the screen that are completely surrounded by the city of Springdale, and the statute requires that before any action can be taken, excuse me, on an annexation order, it's a public hearing has to be held, so that's why we're holding the public hearing at this time. There is an item on the city council meeting agenda dealing with this, but by statute we're required to hold a public hearing first, and property owners have been notified, and I would just open it up for anyone who wants to speak.
Okay.
And if you come, state your name and your address so we can have it on the record.
Yeah, and please, please keep your comments brief, and if the, if the comments get too repetitive, we'll need to move it on, so, but we're happy to hear from any of you that would like to, like to comment on, on the, during the public hearing. Just, as Ernest said, please come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and again, please keep your comments brief. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on. We'll call the meeting to order now. This is the regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, November 13th, 2018, and we'll start things off by asking our city clerk to call the roll. Denise?
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Rick Culver.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Colby Fulfer.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rick Evans.
Here.
Jim Reed.
Here.
Kathy J. Cox.
Here.
Ernest Kate.
All right, thank you. We're at item five on the agenda. This is the portion of the agenda that the council sets aside each meeting for public comments. If there is any one that would like to address the council, again, you're welcome to come to the microphone, please state your name and address, and keep your comments brief, and understand that nothing you bring up will be considered by the council tonight. So in other words, if anyone would like to speak concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come at this time. All right, y'all are a shy bunch tonight. All right. Item six, approval of minutes. Council, entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. What's your pleasure on procedural motions, council?
Move for A and B.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion as second for A and B. Denise?
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item eight, and I'm gonna, this is the ordinance annexing certain land located in Benton County, Arkansas, and I'm gonna let Ernest read the whole title, and I'm gonna turn it over to him.
This is an ordinance annexing certain land located in Benton County, Arkansas pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated 14-40-501, at sec declaring an emergency and for other purposes. The reason it has an emergency clause is the statute requires that if you pass the ordinance, that the city's required to begin immediately providing services to the area, so that's why we put an emergency.
Okay.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second to approve the ordinance. Council, any questions or comments before we open it up to the residents in the room? Would anyone like to address this, one way or the other? Yes. Finally, we get somebody to talk.
Good evening, Mayor Sprouse, members of the city council, thanks for taking the time today. My name is David Simpson, I'm at 13198 Rusty Black Hawk Court. I'm here tonight as a president and a director of the Spring Ridge subdivision POA. We, our subdivision consists of 59 landowners across 63 parcels. We appeal to you to all tonight to vote in favor of annexing these parcels under the emergency clause. Two of the five parcels share 408 yards of adjacency with six of our parcels, with other, with the other three parcels less than a tenth of a mile away. Our subdivision is part of the surrounding 1,500-plus contiguous acres that are zoned A1 and SF1. First, when our neighborhood and surrounding land in, in the vicinity was annexed into Springdale over time, it created these five enclave properties as defined by the Arkansas Code. In 2013, the state passed Act 1071 to prevent the creation of enclaves when annexing lands pursuant to Arkansas Code, Title 14, Chapter 40, Clause 504. Enclave lands are to be avoided per Arkansas Code, thus, we believe that Springdale should annex these properties in keeping with the spirit of the state code. And finally, as residents of Springdale, we can rest assured that improvements to adjacent incorporated land under the Springdale zoning ordinance are performed in accordance in to the ordinance and zoning maps, such that improvements will preserve the character of the district, are suitable for particular uses of the land, and with a view to conserve the value of our buildings and property consistent with a comprehensive plan. As per the purpose of the ordinance, Chapter 130, Article 1, Section 2, unfortunately, we and myself and other Spring Ridge residents don't have these assurances concerning this and the four other parcels that are completely surrounded by the Springdale parcels. As such, 1.4 acres of mature vegetation has been cleared on one of the, one of the lots in questions out of a total of 2.25 acres, in order to erect two billboard structures for a total of eight billboards, that has negatively affected the character of our region. No site plan review or permit was needed under Benton County ordinance, and we think that this is unacceptable. At this time, I'd like to ask all the residents present of Spring Ridge that are present tonight, please stand up. So myself and my fellow neighbors and Springdale citizens sincerely appeal to you all to vote in favor of this annexation. We want to thank you all for your service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else like to speak? All right, if there's no other questions or comments by the council, then I'll ask for the vote. Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
Welcome to Springdale.
Yeah, thank you for coming out tonight, and we, don't you get to sit. You bet. Thank you. Now, you don't have to leave. You can. It's going to be such a riveting meeting. Thank you all for being here, really. No, thank you all for being here. Okay, item nine, as Patsy makes her way, planning commission reports and recommendations by Patsy Christie, Director of Planning. Patsy?
The item on the agenda tonight is a replat of the part of Lot 6 on West Side Village, Phase 2. This is the lot on 412 that has Arby's and Taco Bueno on it. They're currently on one lot, we're splitting it to two separate lots. The planning commission reviewed this replat, recommends approval, the title of the ordinance reads "An Ordinance Accepting the Replat of Part of Lot 6, West Side Village, Phase 2 to the City of Springdale and Declaring an Emergency."
Move the ordinance, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion as second. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed. Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item 10, ordinance committee report and recommendations. Our chairman, Mike Overton, could not be here tonight. Who took, Jeff, did you, who took that in committee?
Mike was here for that.
He was here.
Oh, Mike was here for that. Well, somebody, would somebody like to take that? If not, I will. Okay.
I will.
Jeff?
Uh, let's see, we're talking about item nine? No, I'm sorry, 10A.
Item 10. You've got three items there.
Yes, item 10A is an ordinance amending Section 42-77 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and for other purposes. As I recall, this ordinance was forwarded to the council with recommendation for approval. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right.
The ordinance pass.
Anyone want to talk about it?
This is the...
We...
It's clearly defining...
Ron, is Ron here? I think Brad, you were bringing this forward. Why don't you come up, just so the people at home will know, I know they were, I know they were related, or a couple of them were related, and I don't want to get them wrong.
Yeah, the, the thing was, and I missed the committee meeting from two times ago, and supposedly there was some discussion at that first meeting about asking the, Brad or someone to come forward with some changes to deal with shrubs at intersections, and is that right, Brad?
Yes, grass in the right of ways and...
Grass in the right of ways.
Is the first one the one having to do with the six-foot, or, or if there's a fence inside the, that's later?
No, that's the next one.
Okay.
This is, this is the...
This one requires...
Well, actually, it does.
Keep their shrubs cleared back from...
Get your, get your mic there, Brad, so people at home can...
This one requires property owners to keep their shrubs and trees trimmed back out of the right of way.
At intersections, and then also the grass. So it is that six-foot thing, too? Or 12-foot?
Well, the 12-foot, I think, is the next one.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got three ordinances that it takes to address all of these. So the first one has to do with maintenance of the right of way in front of their house, and then trimming the vegetation back to keep it out of the way of signs.
Gotcha.
And, and traffic at an intersection.
All right, we have a motion and a second on that? We don't have a second? We do?
Thought it was.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments?
I've got a question. Where it says, shall keep that portion of said right of way from the center line to the private property line, where's, where would the center line be?
The yellow stripe down the middle of the street.
Okay. Other questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fullfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Fullfer.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fullfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fullfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Carries seven zero. Doesn't have an emergency clause.
Mayor, the second ordinance that the ordinance committee discussed is item 10B, and the title of that ordinance reads "An Ordinance Amending Section 91-62 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes." Again, this ordinance was discussed by the committee and forwarded to the council with recommendation for approval. As I recall, this is the ordinance that deals with the fence rows that, but subdivisions or street right of ways.
Basically, it just added the sentence, "And shall keep all fence rows located there on free of grass weeds and brush," so we didn't change the distance, we just, if there is a fence in there, we included that fence row as part of the maintenance. Right? Okay. All right.
It's a motion. I'll make a motion, this pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second. Any further comment or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Fullfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fullfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fullfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed. Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item 10, ordinance committee report and recommendations. Our chairman, Mike Overton, could not be here tonight. Who took, Jeff, did you, who took that in committee?
Mike was here for that.
He was here.
Mike was here.
Oh, Mike was here for that. Well, somebody, would somebody like to take that? If not, I will. Okay.
I will.
Jeff?
Uh, let's see, we're talking about item nine? No, I'm sorry, 10A.
Item 10. You've got three items there.
Yes, item 10A is an ordinance amending Section 42-77 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and for other purposes. As I recall, this ordinance was forwarded to the council with recommendation for approval. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right.
The ordinance pass.
Anyone want to talk about it?
This is the...
We...
It's clearly defining...
Ron, is Ron here? I think Brad, you were bringing this forward. Why don't you come up, just so the people at home will know, I know there were, I know they were related, or a couple of them were related, and I don't want to get them wrong.
Yeah, the, the thing was, and I missed the committee meeting from two times ago, and supposedly there was some discussion at that first meeting about asking the, Brad or someone to come forward with some changes to deal with shrubs at intersections, and is that right, Brad?
Yes, grass in the right of ways and...
Grass in the right of ways.
Is the first one the one having to do with the six-foot, or, or if there's a fence inside the, that's later?
No, that's the next one.
Okay.
This is, this is the...
This one requires...
Well, actually, it does.
Keep their shrubs cleared back from...
Get your, get your mic there, Brad, so people at home can...
This one requires property owners to keep their shrubs and trees trimmed back out of the right of way.
At intersections, and then also the grass.
At intersections.
So it is that six-foot thing, too? Or 12-foot?
Well, the 12-foot, I think, is the next one.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got three ordinances that it takes to address all of these. So the first one has to do with maintenance of the right of way in front of their house, and then trimming the vegetation back to keep it out of the way of signs.
Gotcha.
And, and traffic at an intersection.
All right, we have a motion and a second on that? We don't have a second? We do?
Thought it was.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments?
I've got a question. Where it says, shall keep that portion of said right of way from the center line to the private property line, where's, where would the center line be?
The yellow stripe down the middle of the street?
Okay. Other questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fullfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fullfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed. Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item 10, ordinance committee report and recommendations. Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Yes, sir, thank you. Item 13A is a resolution, and the title of that resolution is "A Resolution Amending the 2018 Budget of the City of Springdale Street Department." This has to do with the transfer of funds from the street paving to capital equipment.
Jeff, you, you went to B, I think.
What? Did I?
Yeah, but we can go ahead and do that one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If you want to. Let's go, you want to carry on with B? That's fine, since you've read it.
That's okay with the council.
Okay.
Brad, you want to talk about that?
This moves funds that are already approved in our current budget from one line item, which is paving, to capital equipment.
What's the equipment, though?
The equipment is a mini ex, mini excavator that we discussed three weeks ago, I believe.
Right. Okay.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Motion as second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fullfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item 13, finance committee report and recommendations. Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Yes, sir, thank you. Item 13A is a resolution, and the title of that resolution is "A Resolution Amending the 2018 Budget of the City of Springdale Street Department." This has to do with the transfer of funds from the street paving to capital equipment.
Jeff, you, you went to B, I think.
What? Did I?
Yeah, but we can go ahead and do that one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If you want to. Let's go, you want to carry on with B? That's fine, since you've read it.
That's okay with the council.
Okay.
Brad, you want to talk about that?
Right. This moves funds that are already approved in our current budget from one line item, which is paving, to capital equipment.
What's the equipment, though?
The equipment is a mini ex, mini excavator that we discussed three weeks ago, I believe.
Right. Okay.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Motion as second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fullfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Fullfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fullfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fullfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
And I'm asking the council to move that money back into our budget so that we can purchase a transport van for prisoner transports to the two counties, including equipment and for replacement of a, uh, marked patrol vehicle that we lost, uh, due to a accident earlier in the year.
Resolution pass.
We have a motion and a second. Pass the resolution. Any further comments or questions? Chief? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise.
Watson.
Yes.
Ulfar. Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed. Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Uh, 14, Street and CIP Committee Report and Recommendations, Chairman Rick Evans. Rick?
Last week, Street and CIP, pre-resolution on the agenda tonight and all three were- First one is a resolution authorizing-
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? I see on this one and the next one, uh, Rick Pulveretti's here, if you have questions that, uh, didn't come up during the committee meeting. Okay? Anyone in the audience? Okay. Rick, swallow that thing when you, when you talk. Thanks, Joanna. All right. Any questions for Rick on item 14A? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise.
Ulfar.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing the transfer of certain real property from the Water and Sewer Commission to the Springdale Water and Sewer Club, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute all necessary documents and otherwise to act in furtherance of this transfer.
Would the resolution pass?
Second.
Well, we getting our new, we getting our new council chambers here in about a year and a half. You're way able to hear that.
But you are correct. It's impossible to hear.
This is a terrible room to listen in.
But I mentioned, I did, not to get off track, but I mentioned that it said planning last week. I couldn't, I was over there with others. We couldn't hear a word that was being said.
If y'all can, if y'all can bring us up any, any without getting a lot of feedback, just, I, I know they, they try and push it to the edge, but this room, because of the air handling in it, uh, is just terrible for y'all to hear and I know that. Uh, but we'll, we'll remedy that when we get our new building, so, uh-
Do you wanna explain what we're doing here?
Yes, sir. As you may or may not know, we described this in the last, uh, the committee meeting, but the Water and Sewer Commission has been owning and operating a certain piece of property that is landlocked within the golf course proper. Um, we're in the process of securing certain right of ways from, uh, the golf course and they, in exchange for those, has asked for that particular piece of property. They've been maintaining it for a number of years. You will retain all easements for facilities on there. Um, it's basically an old lift station site that is no longer being used at this time and, uh, makes sense to the Springdale Water and Sewer Commission to release that property to the golf course folks.
And it's in exchange for some property-
It is in exchange for two easements, one on the east side and one on the west side. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Reed.
Okay. Any other questions?
And it's the 14th hole, right, Mike?
It's the 14th hole.
That's the guy that knows.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyone else have questions on this? Okay. Denise.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Ulfar.
Carry seven zero.
Last, I have a resolution authorizing-
Thank you.
Funds from the capital improvement project fund, Charlotte Street, and this basically to finish opposite side of, that we, uh, actually adopted, we didn't, didn't-
Right.
Resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions?
Mayor, I apologize, I wasn't at that committee meeting. Uh, I was absent and I was going through the packet and I was just trying to wrap my head around this.
Well, it's, uh, it's hard to do. I thought we had already had this done and what we did, we, we approved the east side, but not the west side. We're partnering with the property owner with the, uh, owner of the clinic, with the Kendricks. And it was cheaper to do all the improvements if we went ahead and improved with them. And, um, and I, I thought we had it all figured out. I don't think we're spending any more money than we'd planned on. I think we're just, we didn't include the west side in the resolution that was passed.
So was it, was in this packet, I guess we've got a revised quote. Is, is any of this, is any of this from what we approved on the other?
Yes. Well, the, this first came up in October of 17. I thought we approved funds then, but we didn't. We basically just said, "We'll partner with you," I think is, and I don't know if Patsy or Brad, if y'all are, are Wyman, if y'all can, because we were having trouble sorting it out ourselves. Then in, uh, earlier, I think this past summer, we approved the resolution with money attached to it, but it, and we, I thought it was for both sides of the street, but it wasn't. It just covered the east side of the street.
Quote is, includes the addition on the other 29.
Right.
So none of this would've been what we've already approved. It's, it's not a matter of-
Some of it is. All but 29 is.
Yeah, all but about, we're, we're basically increasing it by $30,000 to do the west side. And I, and I, I thought we had done it and I think some of y'all thought we had done it, I, but some of you didn't remember it.
I know.
I think I was the lone one that remembered discussing it.
We, we talked about it, about doing both sides originally.
While we were there.
And then when we came back and did the funds, we only matched or did whatever with the Kendricks and it did not include the 29 to do the west side.
Yeah. So this is, I, I was thinking, the way I was reading it, it may be a revision asking for more money for what we had already agreed on, but that's, I guess it's not-
No, this, this would've been for the west side regardless. We just didn't approve the 30,000 for the west side.
Yeah.
Okay? Any other questions? All right. Anybody? Okay, Denise.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Ulfar.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven zero.
Okay. Thank you. Item 15, I'm gonna turn over to our city attorney, Ernest.
Thank you. I'm gonna read the title of the ordinance. It's an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to follow a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas, 408 Charles Street. It's been the practice of this council that if the property owner shows up and wants to dispute the lien, that we cite them into court, uh, 'cause that's the more appropriate place to, to have a dispute over an amount as opposed to this council. And I do see the property owner is here. I obviously want to give him the opportunity to address the council, but, but if that's his reason for being here, I just wanted to remind you, that's normally what your procedure is.
Okay.
So I've read, read the title of the ordinance.
All right. We have, uh, well, I'll, I'll wait and see if the council's inclined to take any action first.
I'm gonna move this ordinance pass.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to-
Then leads-
Pass the ordinance. Now, we'll certainly give anyone an opportunity to speak. Yet, uh, so if anyone would like to speak before we vote, uh, you're welcome to come at this time to the microphone. And we can help if we've, uh, Chief, you have a handheld over there? We can bring you a microphone, sir, if you're, if you wanna address the council. Yeah. Okay. I thought you might. We'll, we'll see if we can get you a microphone. Will this handheld work? Okay. Probably will if you turn it on.
From the podium?
Okay. Sorry. Rick, is there one in the podium? Bring him out here so, so he can see which one you got. Now? You gonna try, you got the other one? You gonna try it? He's gonna come down.
Coming down.
Oh, there's one. We got it.
It's working.
Yeah, we got it. Hand that to the gentleman and, uh, there you go, sir. Okay, you're welcome to address the council, sir.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Earl Tobler. I'm a veterinarian and I'm, in my judgment, one of the best. I was graduated from Kansas State University in 1958 and served two years in the Air Force and been running the practice in San Fernando Valley, Los Angeles, and practiced there almost 50 years. I also am a licensed trainer of racehorses. I've raced and trained and showed rigging horses as a hobby through the years with some great success. And I was on the board of directors of the Australian Racing Board of the State of California. And, uh, when I got crippled up, I got to where I couldn't handle the horses, so I took a job working for USDA, uh, me, uh, checking inspection. I am also a recovering alcoholic. I am, I just, a week ago Sunday, last Sunday, I celebrated my 24th year of being clean and sober.
Oh, congratulations.
My sixth son, I married his mother when he was 12 years old, no, nine years old. And, and neither small nine-year-old kid was ever so. Man, he made good crazy, a good-looking kid and all the girls loved him. And, uh, he was my biggest helper, 'cause at that time I was racing horses. And Jason, I went out one morning and Jason was setting on a mare out in the middle of an inn that I had constructed for the horses, the mares and horses that younger than racing age. And Jason was setting on this mare out in the middle of the back. I said, "Jason, how did you get on that mare?" He said, "Well, she come up to the fence and I just drive it up on the fence and jumped on her." I said, "Jason, that mare hasn't had anybody on her back in she, in her life. She's not broke, she's a brood mare." And honestly, most horses would've killed him, but she was just that kind of mare. She just sat there and said, "What in the world are you doing up there?" And, uh, he said, "Well, can I break her?" And I said, "You sure can if you can do it. That's fine with me and she's not raising babies that, uh, and he just as well be doing whatever you want to with her." He not only broke her, he had her jumping and doing stuff like that. Jason also was so helpful, he got to, he, he was part Aztec and his dad and mother were both part American Indian. And then to talk about riding like an Indian, I mean, he did. He could ride. And he was, he grew up to be six foot three and he had muscles on his muscles. And, uh, we buried Jason sometime ago from drug and alcohol addiction, liver insufficiency, about three years ago. It's been my dream from many years ago to have some kind of way that, to extend after people get out of rehab, 'cause that's where the problem gets, they go out of rehab and they go back with their buddies and say, "Okay, Jason, what's the big deal? You're not that bad. Just have a drink to celebrate you getting out of jail." And that happened to Jason many times. And boy, I seriously went over to Jason and said, "I am not an alcoholic." Boy, and at 24, he showed me the hotel in Better Creek, Michigan, where he was a manager of when he was 24 years old. A big hotel. Jason learned to be a, went to, um, Santa Fe, New Mexico Culinary School. And he was a chef. He was so capable. Jason killed himself with alcohol. He just as well have taken a gun and shot his head. I bet I spent $200,000 trying to get Jason sober. And the big problem is Jason's mother, who's a beautiful girl, very intelligent and talented, was also an alcoholic. And also she was a badly abused child. Her mother was mentally ill and really beat the crap out of her, her little girl. And it just messed up Jason, Dicky's mind to the point all she could do was, to the parent was the way she was parented and that's-
Right.
And as you may check it out, almost all abusive parents were also abused when they were children. They learn it that way. It's like, "I wanna be like you, Mom, or I wanna be like you, Dad," like that song that's in the grave.
Earl, uh-
Anyway, I-
Yeah, let's, let's, I, I, I don't wanna speed you up or rush you, but-
I have a, I have a bill for 800 and some dollars to, uh, clean up my property that I'm trying to make a place for people can get cleaned and sobered. I'm 85 years old, I'm a disabled veteran and I have some things I'm gonna give you as, as, uh, what do they call it, as discovery, isn't it? Because I will, I will go to court on this. I will also go to the newspapers, because I was just looking at the-
Okay.
At the photographs I picked up and, uh-
I, I think the court-
I'm gonna use those in the paper.
Sure. Well, I think the court's the proper venue.
What's that?
I think the court is the proper venue for, for your, for your, uh, objection.
I called the city attorney's office about it. They said, "Talk to the council first."
Okay.
As, and what we will do is we'll, uh, if you don't willing to pay up, we'll try to get a lien to put on my property. All right. I gotta, I came to Arkansas and when I, my job ended as a, an inspector, I stayed because I love this state and, and the people are the most nurturing people I've ever seen in my life. I, I have never had to change a tire. If I have a broken side of the road, there's two people stopped before I get stopped to help me change the tire. I've had that happen so many times. I blew a tire in, in the parking lot of Walmart. I had about 16 people around there, most of them Latin, as a matter of fact. And, uh, I am very disappointed with our president and the, the things that he's doing to Latin people. And my first wife was Latin and, uh, I'm going to do whatever I can to embarrass or to defeat anything, anyone who's gonna be supportive of what's going on now. And, uh, I always thought I'd be good at politics. I, I, when, the first thing happened is they, they took my, my car away. I had an old car that, uh, they come by and, and said, "You know, you gotta get rid of it." I said, "What are you, I, I'm using it for storage because I got a bunch of important papers in it and stuff and they need to go through and it's cold." You know, it was in March, last March. And I just can't do that kind of thing. And so I have to have someone who will help me. And that's, and it's a lot easier to get someone helping when the weather gets a little better.
Sure. Well, Earl, I think, I think the best course forward for you and for every, all, all parties involved is for the city attorney to go ahead and, and cite you into court so that the judge can then make a determination about the, about the lien or not, not about the, go ahead.
Earl, you and I go back a ways.
What is it?
What we're gonna do, code enforcement will, code enforcement will give you a citation. This way we won't do a lien on your property tonight and then you'll get your chance in front of the judge, okay? So they'll get that, they'll get that for you right now and get you a court date, okay?
I have the slightest idea what you said.
That way we don't do a lien on your property.
I don't hear what you're going.
I think what we'll do, we'll make sure that Ron gets with you and, and Ernest if needed and they'll explain to you exactly what, what we need to do going forward from here. Okay?
Would you like for me to give you this discovery stuff right now? I'll tell you my, my history and-
Yeah, you can, you can give it to Ron when he, uh, he'll come and, and, uh, but I think that's the best, the best way to move forward with this.
Thank you.
What do we need to do? We have a motion and a second. Could we withdraw?
I will throw my motion.
Okay. We've withdrawn the motion for the, to approve the lien, so now-
Just one more thing I wanna say, too.
Very briefly, yes.
It was the size of the bill, because-
Right.
Uh, I, the girl, one of the girls that's living in my house-
Right.
Had a whole bunch of stuff piled up out in the street and she said, she told me all they did is stop and load it up. And that's 800 and some dollars seems to be absurd.
Okay. Well, those are the types of, those are the types of arguments-
How many citizens of Springdale-
Those are the arguments that, that you can make to the judge.
-think of a good thing to do.
Yes, sir. All right?
Yes, sir.
Ron, thank you, sir. All right. Uh, item, well, it's, it's rated, it's, it's numbered 15 also, but it's comments from department heads. Do we have any comments from department heads? From council? Uh, from city attorney?
No, sir.
And I don't have anything, uh, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Okay, motion and a second. We're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.